Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Tuesday, December 20 meeting of the Bethany City Council to order. Would you please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Knapp and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
If you'll bow your heads with me, please. Father, thank you for this evening together. We can all be together. And thank you for the gifts that you've given us and continue to give us every day. Bless those who are ailing, who are ill, who are having a hard time this season, and please continue to look out for them. Continue to keep our first responders, who don't get as much time off over the holidays, as they continue to serve our citizens. And just keep us in your prayer. Amen.
Please face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent docket. We have items 1A through F. Do we have a motion on those items?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please post your votes for the consent docket as a whole. Thank you. Come down front for item two. Have Jeff join me down here. Wyatt, if you'll come on down.
I want to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Wyatt Knapp began his scouting career in 2007 as a Cub Scout, earning membership and participating as an active scout of the last Frontier Council, Batten Powell District, and Boy Scout troop 179 since 2011. And whereas, over the course of his tenure as a Boy Scout, Wyatt advanced through the ranks and earned a total of 40 merit badges, including topics such as financial, personal time management, first aid, traffic safety, citizenship in the community, nation and world, horsemanship, environmental science, and emergency preparedness, among others. And whereas, in addition to his career exploring training, Wyatt completed the National Youth Leadership Training Program and also participated in the 2013 National Scout Jamboree in West Virginia, for which he was volunteered to serve in the Officer Corps as troop chaplain. And whereas, in September of 2016, Wyatt was approved by an Eagle Scout Board of Review as having completed all requirements to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout by leading a project which clocked some 150 hours of community service and provided additional playground equipment for an elementary and middle school students at St. Charles Borneo Catholic School, the chartering organization for Troop 179, and where Wyatt attended elementary school. Therefore, I, Mayor Brian Taylor, hereby declare December 20, 2016, as Wyatt Knapp Day in the City of Bethany. Congratulations, Wyatt.
Thank you. And I also want to give you the proverbial key to the city. Congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. Item three is called to the public. If any member of the audience wishes to address the council, please step forward to the podium, first state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Hearing or seeing none, I'll move on to item four, which is discuss and establish cemetery improvement task force. JD?
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay? Everybody hear me okay? Good evening. I have first something to hand out to you all. I'm handing these out. These are board application forms that we have created. Nikki Gabbard, who I'll introduce after a while to you, helped to format these and put these together. They're informational sheets that we'll be providing to the public a little bit later on. But back to the matter at hand, the cemetery improvement task force. We are proposing that we form a task force specifically for studying our current cemetery, coming up with ideas on improvements for the cemetery, and then to make recommendations then ultimately to the city council on those improvements. You might recall, in our comp plan 2030, it contemplated improvements to the cemetery. The cemetery is a gateway, one of our gateways into our community, and the appeal of that to the traveling public was what was of concern in the comp plan. What I had, what we envisioned with this was a committee of up to 12 folks from the community, that hopefully we can find those folks that are passionate about cemeteries. There are many people that do care deeply about where their loved ones are interred. And it's kind of a commemoration to those who have lived in our community in prior years. So that is the idea behind having a task force that's specifically targeted for this particular purpose, and then once that purpose is complete, then the task force, then we'll end it soon.
All right. We'll open the floor for discussion.
I might throw in one more thing if I could. Mr. Mayor, this is a task force. It's a temporary, it's not a permanent board, as we, the two boards we discussed a couple of meetings ago. Therefore, there wasn't a resolution proposed, so it was just a simple motion to approve the formation of the task force would be sufficient.
So all we need is the motion to approve this. Will there be any discussion as to what the task force will entail, or that will just go to that task force, and then they'll come back to us and review those things?
Yes. What I had envisioning occurring is I'll probably attend these task forces and the other one that we're going to talk about in just a little bit to kind of help get them started. Then I'll probably leave them alone for a while to kind of do what they'd like to do, but yet be there as a resource for them, and then to be able to eventually come back and bring to you recommendations.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the cemetery improvement task force, to establish the cemetery improvement task force.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
I do have one question of just basic curiosity. Do we know approximately how many lots are still available there, or what percentage is full?
I think we're getting fairly full, and I don't know, do any of you folks happen to know off the top of your head?
That's a Linda Hage question.
Okay. I understand.
So I know that there's, I did take a tour through there just last week, and there aren't too many lots still available there.
Just a little bit of history. Bethany acquired that cemetery from a private organization many years ago, and the old part of the cemetery has been there probably near 100 years. And we're not selling any grave sites in the old part of the cemetery because the records aren't necessarily accurate, because we acquired those from another entity, those records, and consequently, you know, we're not sure we know where every grave is. So all of the new sales are in the newer sections of the cemetery.
All right. We do have a motion and a second. Please post your votes. Thank you. Item five is discuss and establish the Vision 2030 branding and logo task force. JD?
Hey, thank you all for the cemetery task force. Similar to that is, as I, we pointed out in the narrative, the seal that we currently have is the closest thing to a logo that we currently have. The seal does have some entities that no longer exist that are spelled out on that. And then even larger, more to the point, is what is the message that we wish to communicate to the world that represents Bethany, and how do we want to portray that? And that is the brainstorming that is contemplated in establishing a branding and logo task force, for them to come up with ideas, to vet those ideas, and then to be able to bring a recommendation to you all. We've been talking about these committees. I have to tell my little joke that I shared with the mayor the other day. I worked, my first job out of college, I worked for a company that was owned by Ross Perot, and I remember on my wall I had this saying that said, "If you see a snake, don't form a committee, just kill it." And so here we are, forming all these committees. But I think that these committees, these task forces are specific in their, so specific in their tasks that it makes a lot of sense. There are maybe people out there that are passionate about parks, maybe cemeteries, and maybe branding and logo and the brainstorming that will go into that. There might be a number of people that really would enjoy being a part of that, instead of us trying to do it all. So I think engaging the community, which is kind of part of what this is about as well, is key to that. With 20,000 people, I think we'll find, I think we'll be pleasantly surprised with the turnout. I hope so, anyway. One thing I failed to mention a moment ago when we passed out the board applications was that we anticipate in January, beginning the promotion of these public boards that we will have and task forces in January, after the holidays are over, and give it at least a month for folks to find out about it, make these available on the website, through a number of means, maybe even through our utility bills with an update that maybe we'll do in January, so that we really get as much of the public as we can, so that we can engage those people that maybe had thought of it before, and maybe they would like to be a part of it. But this branding, though, is really kind of the cornerstone to some of the other work that we're going to be doing with the arts and culture board then. They will have an idea, okay, this is what, as a community, we want to reflect, and so perhaps they may come up with ideas for our public art that might be somewhat reflective of that or complementary to it at the very least, rather than them just kind of being out doing kind of their own thing. And so I'm really looking forward to this, and I think, as I said, this has got the cornerstone, and it'll be exciting to see how all these pieces start coming together a little bit later on in 2017.
Well, I'm excited about this. So many of our signs are so faded and tired, and so this is a perfect time to at least think about rebranding and a new seal or a new logo. So I move we approve the resolution to establish the Vision 2030 branding and logo task force for the City of Bethany.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Please post your votes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item six is approval of ordinance number 1925, amending Title V, Chapter 50 of the Bethany Code of Ordinances pertaining to customer utility accounts, providing for security deposits for utilities, providing for meter exchange fee, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency. Item 6A is approval of ordinance number 1925 on reading by title only. Do we have such a motion?
Second.
Please post your votes for reading by title only. Thank you. You have a day?
The mayor just read the entire title to the ordinance, so I'll repeat it if you want me to, but that would suffice for the reading by title only.
All right. Item 6B is approval of Sections 1 through 3 of ordinance number 1925.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right. Do we have a second? Do we have any questions or discussion?
This has no effect upon the present billing rate that we have, it's only on the deposits.
Yes, and on new accounts.
On new accounts.
Yes.
Only on new accounts.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I do have a question. Excuse my voice. The paragraph right under the 50.09, it says, "The mechanics, is one of the, the mechanics to calculate deposits over a two-year period prove to be both time-consuming for the staff and an irritation to the public." And that was one of the reasons for this change. And then down in the proposed ordinance number two is just about the same process for the commercial part. Can you explain why we have one seems to be a reason for change, and then we're going back to that on the commercial?
Now, let me take a first wipe of that. If I don't answer the question, then we'll wipe JR up. But the commercial accounts, they vary so wide in the amount of water that is used, that it's really very difficult for us to set a single rate that would be applicable to the smallest business and also the largest business. That's why having that based upon some sort of usage or estimated usage is important. And you'll notice we also added some language there, too, that didn't previously exist that David put together for us, that indicates how we'll calculate brand-new accounts that have not existed before as well. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, and I kind of assumed that, because it's not quite as involved in those calculating of the commercial business as it would just everybody's homes. So I kind of assumed that, but I thought, well, it'd be interesting to know, anyway.
And the risk of loss is so much greater on those accounts. It's not unusual to have $10,000, $12,000 monthly bills on some of these accounts.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please post your votes for approval of Sections 1 through 3. Thank you. Item C is the emergency clause. We have a motion for approval, Section 4.
Attorney Davis, is that needed?
I don't think we have enough members to pass it, so I believe just pass over that item, because it takes seven votes to pass the emergency clause.
All right. Item 7, adoption of Resolution Number 1426, calling and authorizing the County Election Board of Oklahoma County to hold a special election for the election of one council member for Ward 3 to fill a vacant position for a term expiring 2019, establishing the filing period for the office of council member of Ward 3, and providing for notice of election. This is open for discussion, council members, just like we did on the last election, for choosing what date that filing period and what date the election would be. Is that correct, David?
Yes, I had automatically set the election for April 4th, because we have an election potentially scheduled for that date. And as far as the filing periods are concerned, that can be three consecutive days of any week between now, any date between now and February 20th. I'm sorry, February 22nd.
I would like to suggest February 20th, 21st, and 22nd. That's a Monday, Tuesday, and a Wednesday. I had talked to Doug Sanderson at the Oklahoma County Election Board, and he said those dates would be fine.
And the way we actually had this set up, this and the next item was a roll call vote, and the thought was that we could take several different nominations or ideas of times for those elections, and we would go around one by one and vote for which dates you choose. So on the next one, it would be, several people could nominate different members for vice mayor, and then we will go around and one at a time vote for who you choose of the nominated members.
I looked up the holidays, just because I thought of those dates, too. And February 20th is a county, it says it's observed as a holiday in Oklahoma County, and it's President's Day, so I could ask-
I would be surprised if the election board was open that day.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I called and talked to Doug Sanderson just recently, on the, I guess it was the 19th, and we discussed in length the filing times that he would approve and that would work for them, and he approved February 20th, 21st, and 22nd. I talked directly to Doug Sanderson at the Oklahoma County Election Board.
I've got a question about the length, if the election will be on the 4th of April, if these dates hold up that we're speaking of. What about the charter and us having to fill a seat? Is that a problem?
That's what we're doing with this resolution. We're filling the vacancy for Ward 3.
I understand, but would it, well, it has to be filled by an election, it can't be filled by one-
That's correct, because there's more than one year left on the term, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information.
Sure.
Well, I would propose, since that's a holiday, February 15th, 16th, and 17th, which is a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Does anybody else care to make any dates?
I like 15th, 16th, 17th, because then the election on the 14th is over, and if people want to file, it still gives them time, if they weren't elected or they thought about it and didn't know about the earlier filing. So I would be comfortable with 15th, 16th, 17th.
That's fine.
Well, we can roll call vote, it's the way it was on the agenda.
I was disvoting. I thought it was my turn to vote.
Oh, okay. So that we'll have Harris at 15th, 16th, and 17th? And you as well, Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Lundstra? What dates?
15th, 16th, 17th.
Okay. Mr. Shirey?
That appears fine.
15th, 16th, and 17th?
15th, 16th.
Mr. Knapp?
Those dates are fine with me, yeah.
Okay. And I would vote that they would be those dates as well. He wants to know advertising dates.
We can publish this right now, if that's what you're asking.
Okay. Item 8, also a roll call vote, to appoint the vice mayor to serve the remaining term of the recently vacated position.
I would like to nominate Randy Lundstra.
Okay.
Did you vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Or just the dates? I guess you did.
Okay, we have a nomination of council member Lundstra. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Knapp. My thinking, much as I would love to see Randy, he would only be on there until the election, and Jeff is running on the coast, so I would like him to be on until June.
I did have some educated thinking on Randy. Of course, he's been a vice mayor before, so he is very well able to fill that position. And also, since he has decided not to run again, his vice mayor would end at the same time that we have a new mayor and a new city council, and at that time, that would allow the new council, new mayor, to go ahead and choose their vice mayor. I thought that would be a nice gesture for them.
Then I will withdraw my nomination.
All right. We will call the roll. Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Since it's only one, I guess we can just post our votes, it doesn't really matter. Post your votes. Thank you. Item 9-
Congratulations.
-is approval of the mayor's appointment of trustee to the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. Councilmembers, I have asked Councilmember Shirey to serve on the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority again. Mr. Shirey has quite a few years of experience on that board, and I think it'd be a good opportunity for him to serve another year, so Mr. Shirey and I have had a conversation about that, and he has graciously accepted my nomination. So do I have a, I'll make the motion on that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please post your votes for Mr. Shirey. Thank you. And item 10 is the city attorney's report. David?
All my items were specifically on the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Item 11 is the city manager's report. JD?
Okay, just one more second.
We don't have a minute.
Well, first of all, congratulations to Jeff's son Wyatt on his accomplishment, also to our new vice mayor, and Mr. Shirey on being on the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. I look forward to working with you in that capacity. I do have a number of things for you this evening, especially not being here last time, and real quickly, I'd like to just thank everyone for their thoughts and prayers. I sufficiently learned of our medical facilities in Oklahoma City vicinity, and I can report that they are good, excellent in all cases. How are we getting feedback? Can you all hear me okay? Can you all hear me okay? Okay, very good. So anyway, thank you for your thoughts and prayers the last couple of weeks ago when I was out. I, as I said, I have a number of things to share with you this evening. We did approve a closing of one of our streets, Asbury Street, from 42nd to 46 through the holidays. Bethany Public Schools is doing a number of, let me try that again. Bethany Public Schools is putting in a new water line that they're needing to have access to the street, and so we have agreed to close the street down during the Christmas break. As far as community involvement and cohesiveness is concerned, of course, we have our library planning and steering committee, we have our comp plan steering committee, which has existed. Now we have a new parks wreck and tree board, we have an arts and culture board, we have, as of tonight, and I appreciate it very much, we'll have a cemetery task force, we'll have a branding and logo task force. All these things go toward community involvement and helping us to have better ideas and make better decisions. So I'm very much looking forward to 2017. A couple more things that I have in the works also, in addition to those items, is the volunteerism of maybe more of our senior population. I have met with the RSVP Retired Service Volunteer Program Director of Oklahoma City to see if they couldn't maybe have more inroads into Bethany and involve more of our senior population in a number of things. We had a great meeting, I look forward to further exploring that with that program, and I've already been placed in contact and made connections with a volunteer that is here in the community of Bethany. Also, working on forming a stakeholders' roundtable. This would be a monthly get-together of stakeholders in our community to discuss things that are going on in our various organizations, as well as the city as a whole. My idea is that because of our quorum issues, that maybe each month, we'd have two or three different council members attend that as well, and so I'll get together a little schedule and see what works for you all best, and especially if we can participate before you leave council and be able to participate in that. Looking forward to that. I think I reported before that I have attended a Bethany Improvement Foundation meeting, and I'm very impressed. These folks are- These folks are putting money together, and they wish to support the city and walk shoulder to shoulder with the city and the improvement of our community. So as I said earlier, I think we are really getting ourselves well set for moving into 2017 and beyond. I also have had a meeting, a couple of meetings now, with the Director of the Northwest Chamber of Commerce, Director Jill McCartney. And we've been talking about the services provided by the chamber and what they possibly could do to either augment what the city does or possibly even replace some of the things that maybe are very time-consuming for city staff that might be better served by volunteers. So we're going to continue to have those discussions. The last area in this community umbrella is our local newspaper. I think I saw Matt Montgomery come in. There's Matt. Matt and I have been getting together a number of times now. He spent time here at our offices. And we're also, Matt and I are working on a time where we're going to be meeting with the owner publisher of the newspaper, Philip Reed. We're going to be developing a relationship with the, with the paper so that I think it's just imperative that we have a thriving, successful local newspaper that, that is a symbiotic relationship with the city where we do well, they do well, and vice versa. So I'm really looking forward to developing that relationship further with them. I think we're already off to a great start. Some other initiatives going on, communications and public relations. In a little bit, I'm going to introduce Nikki to you, so I'll come back to that. Economic and economic development, and more specifically, to the point, a redevelopment authority is something that's kind of in the square of my radar right now, and I'm looking for January to really hone in on that area, and so I'll be reporting back more. Also, planning is another area, and I'm talking about planning for the whole community and streets and roads and sidewalks and those, those kinds of things. We've been in talks with Oklahoma City to learn of the things that they have going on so that, so that we can keep those in mind as we develop our budget and plan for the coming year. Tourism development is also another area. It's probably a little bit later in 2017 that we will focus on. And then also, this probably would be a little bit earlier than tourism, and that would be solid waste collection and possibly recycling. So we have the start of that underway, but have not spent the due amount of time that's probably necessary. So I suspect an initial report probably will be coming your way in February on, on at least our first swipe at that. So that's coming around. Another initiative that we have underway that was called out in our comp plan is code enforcement. We have our police, as I've reported before, our police has engaged in this and assisted our community development department. Our police now have made 55 interactions since we began on November 1. On top of that, community development, which is Paul Justice, has made another 82 interactions. So those interactions are either, have been met with immediate compliance or quick compliance, and there's only just a handful that will probably make their way to the court system. So very pleased with the way that's developing. And if you all, the number of phone calls and emails about properties that are not in compliance have decreased substantially, so I take that as, as kind of a good sign. But please let me know if there are any others that you'd like for us to address, and we'll make sure we get those on the to-do list. Also, upcoming, similar but a little bit different, is dangerous structures. We're going to be putting together a task force representative of a number of our department heads to go and tour some of our apartments that we have in the community, as well as maybe take a look at some other reported dangerous structures. So if you have any concerns about any, any structures, please let us know, so we make sure that we get those checked out as well. So I anticipate later in 2017, us having an initial report to you all on any dangerous structures that are identified as part of that. We also have, our staff has been going around, you probably haven't noticed, but we have been pulling up what we might call as phantom signs. These are poles that used to have signs but no longer have signs. And I've been surprised how many of those have been all over the place. And so we're pulling those up. And then we've also been replacing stop signs that are faded. I believe Dr. Harris mentioned earlier, we have some signs that are faded. We have been replacing a number of our stop signs. We have more to get. I think the next area with Brownsville, I noticed a number of extremely faded signs in Brownville that will be next on the hit list, so to speak. And so that'll be coming here fairly quickly. Organization, I've been mentioning over the last number of meetings, that I do anticipate us doing a realignment of our organization. The comp plan calls for a number of public works projects, and we are not quite in line with being able to carry those out. I anticipate first quarter of 2017, that being in place, if not the early part of the first quarter. I anticipate us also bringing back to you some ideas on our banner policy. We just discussed a banner implementation at the last meeting that I missed, and we have maybe some ideas to share on, on some perhaps other ways that we might be able to tackle those issues. And then also upcoming, I will be meeting with, the one meeting that got canceled last week was with the Embark Director. So that'll be rescheduled probably early January. So I'd like to, at this time, Nikki, if, could you step down here just for a moment, please? I'd like to introduce to you all Nikki Gabbert. Nikki has joined our organization as our new media outreach specialist. She has years of experience in, in media and media relations. She was formerly with the Oklahoma Lottery. We had, we had been advertising for this position, and Nikki came to us as a result of that, and it was really great to have her with us. Not only will she be doing the traditional media like our website, she's here doing our television station tonight, capable access outreach, social media she'll be doing. But on top of that, she and I were discussing today a whole host of other things that, or I think areas that she can assist our organization or our community with. And so we're planning to have her plugged into everything in the organization, attending our various meetings, our committees, our task forces we talked about today as well. I anticipate her in helping and participating with, but also reporting back the visioning and branding part, the arts and culture group that we have set up, maybe even our parks, recs and rec and tree board that we have set up. And then generally, public relations and relations within, outside the organization, reaching out to our community, but then also communicating with, with our staff as well. She's already off to a great start. It's really terrific to have you a part of our team. Thank you. And finally, I usually don't do this, but it's a kind of a rarity for me. Two of my three children are here tonight. Kirsten and Colin Cox are here, and it's kind of nice to have them in the audience. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item 12 is council members announcements, comments, and proposals. Councilmember Knapp, I'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't usually wear this attire to council meetings, but I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting my son on his journey to Eagle Scout and then recognizing him after he did that. Really appreciate that. And my arm was twisted to wear my scout uniform. I was there with, with him pretty much from when he started as a Cub Scout, all the way through Boy Scouts and most of those campouts. I missed a couple over a five-year span, but thank you all for, for that. JD, as usual, your frantic pace. It's hard to keep up writing notes with the frantic pace that you're keeping. And I hope that you do not have to get a thorough review of any more of our health facilities, at least in any time soon. So welcome back and I hope you stay healthy. And lastly, just welcome Nikki onboard. Thanks for being here. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Shirey?
Yes. I'm going to leave off just where Mr. Knapp left off. I'm going to start. I would like to wish everybody in the city of Bethany a very, very Merry Christmas. Knowing about the heritage of this city that I do know about, it's very appropriate that we, we observe this holiday as is put forth. It is wonderful. It is wonderful. It is the American way. This week, I met your two lovely children. About three months ago, I met your daughter, your other daughter, and they seem like a very, very astute group of children. I congratulate you on your procedures for raising them. And Wyatt, you're gone. Being an Eagle Scout is probably, as far as I'm concerned, one of the ultimate things that you will do before you come, become 21 or 18 if you're, if you're a voter. But it is absolutely a difficult undertaking for a young man to go through Eagle Scouts. He has to be a person who is driven and who is able to make decisions and put to it together a plan. Now, I, my son, I can say this, my son was an Eagle Scout, and I know what you went through to get that taken care of, about the same type of program. And it's very difficult to do. But the young man probably did more than his father did, and I know that my son did more than I did. But I tell you, it is absolutely marvelous that a young man can go get an Eagle Scout. And it's, it's, it's a tribute to him. And what we paid to tribute to him, we paid tonight, is a very small price for what he did. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shirey. I don't know if your mic wasn't on or if I just couldn't hear you over your tie.
Well, I understand, but this, this seems to be tradition with the city of Bethany.
It very much is. And Councilmember Harris and I were actually talking about the tie before the meeting and telling JD that we hoped you wore it, and he said it actually exceeded expectations. So I thought we had talked it up enough, but apparently not.
Your red tie is pale.
It is very much so. Very much so. Thank you. Councilmember Lundstra?
Thank you, Mayor. And at the meeting, before the, the meeting tonight, I learned that his tie belongs in the very back of the closet to, so as not to disturb them during the evening or the nighttime sleeping hours. So they keep that in the back of the closet. Jeff, you must be very proud of your child, children actually, both. Very, very fine, fine complement of, of the family. And I appreciate you doing the job that you've done and also your wearing of your uniform tonight. That speaks highly of you as well, that you're that proud of your children to identify with them that closely. Kirsten and Callie, great to see you guys. No, Callie. That's what I'm missing is Callie. Colin, nice, great to have you both here. I've yet to meet Callie, so I've got her on my notes too, but I appreciate you guys coming and, and sharing your time with us during your time off from school. So. 39th and Penile, I understand, we drove by the other night and had a, or the other morning, it had a water main break. If you've ever witnessed our, our public works guys out there in the, in the depths working those lines hot. I say that not literally. I mean, the lines are hot, but they're cold. That doesn't make sense at all. But anyway, the water is, as they're working those lines, is, is just bubbling cold ice water in their faces and they're down the holes. It just goes to show what, what lengths our employees go to to keep our water flowing. And that happens often. I don't know how often, but I, I hope it doesn't, hope, hope it doesn't happen very often because it is very dangerous and very, very, very much a chore to get those lines One, I got about two or three more things, and I'll be finished, and you'll have to not listen to my voice again. But I appreciate the milling of some of our mountain ranges here on Penile Street. I've come to name them, but I guess I'll have to take those names away of those, those bumps and those, that's kept, kept me from speeding for years going down through there. So I'd get no tickets on, on Penile Street.
What do you do with revenue?
Okay, thank you. On a sadder note, we said our goodbyes to a good friend of mine, Chad Kelly, this week, a longtime Bethany resident, an employee there at Southern Azurine. He and I spent many hours together, going two by two with each other, accompanying each other in, in the dormitories, hours and hours of snaking drains and pulling out, well, anyway. Many hours of enjoyable time, giggling like teenage girls, having a great time together. And the Kelly family needs our prayers and support currently. And they're great people who are just givers from the heart, and I appreciate them very much. And the last thing I have is wish my youngest son Trevor happy 21st birthday today. And I'll assure you, Jeff, our boys are not out figuring out which kind of drink they want to have on their 21st birthday. I can assure you, they're, they're somewhere else, and they're not out there trying to figure out what's the type of alcohol they want to experience first. And that's what I appreciate about our kids. That's all I have. Have a great Christmas. Family is what it's all about at this Christmas time. Enjoy your families, enjoy those around you. And the reason for the season is absolutely Jesus Christ, our Savior. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Randy. Councilmember Holloway?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, I appreciate what you just shared about Jesus Christ. And also, you just have a cold? Stay, stay well.
Last year, we're good.
Okay. All right. Well, congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor. And I did want to say once again, congratulations to Wyatt Knapp and on Wyatt Knapp Day. That's quite interesting and a great, great feat to be an Eagle Scout, and I'm excited that the city recognized him with Wyatt Knapp Day. Mr. Shirey, I know that you will do a great job on the Bethany War Acres Public Works Authority. I appreciate your expertise and thank you for what you're going to do for us this year in that position. I had brought some very tiny little kind of Christmas gifts for the people on the horseshoe, and, and it's kind of confusing. So I told them I'd show them how to use this real quickly. So you open it up, and what it is, it's a, it's a little micro screwdriver with some different bits on it. So you open that up, and then you, you take the bit in the part that goes inside here. You just put that in like that and put your bit in. And so you've got four different bits, so that's kind of handy. You carry that in your pocket. I actually have used that. It's small enough that you can have it in. Oh, so Arlie is going to use it as a weapon. So you can use it as a weapon if you'd like. So anyway, it's, it's very easy to use, but if, if you hadn't seen how to put that together before, I've seen people get a pair of pliers out to try to fix it right. So it's very easy to use. So I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and I'm thankful that we can be here in our city of Bethany at this time of year and, and share our families and enjoy our families, remember the ones that aren't with us this year, but they're always with us in our memories. And I hope that you get to enjoy your traditions and also have a Happy New Year, a blessed New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Welcome, Nikki. We have really needed you, and I'll bet Steve Hartsman says amen to that the loudest. We have really needed you, and I'll bet Steve Hartman says amen to that the loudest, right? But we are so glad you're here, and I was delighted to talk to you the other day and learn of your background, and just really excited about the things you have planned. The city manager told me the other day that after his surgery, he had so much more energy, and I thought, how can he? But he's shown us tonight. So you are doing a great job, and we're so pleased with the direction you're taking us. So I'm really delighted, and I'm not just saying that because his kids are here, I say it the rest of the time too, we're really happy that you gave us your home. And thank you for all the staff, for the council, for the people that are here tonight. I know some of you are running for office, and I commend you for that. Thank you for covering us, Matt, and I've been pleased to see more Bethany news in the Tribune. And just was really pleased that all of us could be at the public works building the other day for the luncheon and to meet a lot of the staff that we don't always see personally. So I will add a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2017.
Thank you. I want to start off by, once again, congratulating Wyatt Knapp on his amazing accomplishment. There are not that many folks in the Boy Scouts that ever achieved that rank, and so very, very proud of Wyatt for what he did, and congratulations, Jeff. You're raising a very fine young man there, and I know Wyatt will go far in life and do great things. So congratulations to you for, no doubt, being a big part of what he accomplished, and encouragement and walking along beside him, and I appreciate you wearing your uniform tonight. And I think it's neat, and I hope too that you still stay connected with the Boy Scouts, and no doubt it's a great organization and due to the fact of great people like yourself that volunteer their time. So I hope you continue in that endeavor. Nikki, congratulations and welcome aboard. Great to have you, and as Arlit has said, definitely long overdue, but I'm glad that we got the position filled and we're moving forward. So, and I definitely agree, you're going to find that J.D.'s hard to keep up with, so good luck. And Colin and Kirsten, glad you're here tonight, good to see you guys. Haven't seen Colin since Alliance, Nebraska. My wife and I and kids, we toured up to Yellowstone and Mount Rushmore this summer, and to go from here to Mount Rushmore, Google takes you right through Alliance, Nebraska. So we made that a stop and got to have dinner with J.D. and Tanya, and Colin was able to join us because he was there, so it was a good time, but good to see you guys again, and hope you enjoy your Christmas break here. And other than wishing everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope you check on your neighbors if you have neighbors that are elderly or don't have family around during these times. Weather is supposed to be nice during Christmas, but just checking on people that may not have any family or friends around, and being with them during what can be a difficult time if you don't have that. Is there any new business to come before the Bethany City Council? Hearing none. If there's no objection, we will adjourn until January 3, 2017. Without objection, I'll declare us adjourned. I'll now open the Bethany Public Works Authority. We have the consent docket items 1A and B. Do we have a motion for approval on those items?
I move approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please post your votes. Thank you. Is there any new business to come before the Bethany Public Works Authority? I don't know why that's there, actually, because we still have item 3, which is award of bid of water treatment plant, Quick Lime, to Mississippi Lime Company. Do we have a motion for approval of that award of bid?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please post your votes. Thank you. Is there any new business to come before the Bethany Public Works Authority? Hearing none. If there's no objection, we will adjourn until January 3, 2017. Without objection, we are adjourned. I'll now open the Bethany Hospital Trust. We have the consent docket items 1A and B. Do we have a motion for approval on those items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Nobody talks, and then you want to both talk at once. Please post your votes. Is there any new business to come before the Bethany Hospital Trust? Hearing none. If there's no objection, we will adjourn until January 3, 2017. Without objection, we are adjourned. I'll now open the Bethany Development Authority. We have the consent docket items 1A and B. Do we have a motion for approval on those items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please post your votes. Thank you. Is there any new business to come before the Bethany Development Authority? Hearing none. If there's no objection, I'll declare us adjourned until January 3, 2017. Without objection, we are adjourned, and that concludes tonight's business. Thank you.